Okay, we're live.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special city council meeting. We apologize for being a few minutes late. We had some technical glitches with some of the being able to get in, so we apologize for that. We think we've got it ironed out now. I guess we will begin with our salute to the flag and I will have...
Wait, 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 wait. Do the roll call first.
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay. Okay. That's okay. Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Long Beach held Thursday, April 30th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Delory.
President.
Councilmember Mandell.
President.
Councilmember Trustin.
Here.
That's President McGinnis.
President.
Senator Bendo.
President.
The record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Corporation Counsel Simone Freeman. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Councilwoman McGinnis, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. Republic. And Constitution. Indivisible, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. First, I'd like to welcome our new Corporation Counsel, Simone Freeman. She joined us a couple of days ago. She brings a wealth of experience through the city. Part of our efforts now to build a management team that's going to turn the city around. So we're looking forward to some good things from her.
Thank you.
So with that, I guess we'll get on to the agenda.
Item 1 is a resolution delegating to the City Controller of the City of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, the powers to authorize the issuance of $4,250,000 deficiency notes of the city or as much thereof as may be necessary for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, and to prescribe the terms, form, and contents, and provide for the sale and credit enhancement of such notes.
Okay, so, and just so people know, this was originally on previous city council agenda. Then there was supposed to be a special meeting for Tuesday, and that was delayed to tonight. So the reason was the Bond Counsel and the Comptroller were still dotting eyes and crossing keys and working out some details. That's why it got pushed to tonight. And I believe, based on what I think the Comptroller said, that actually benefited us because the interest rates actually went down during that period. Actually going to get a better interest rate. So with that, though, I'd like to introduce now Richard Totorra, who's the President of CMA. CMA is the city's financial advisor, and he's going to talk about what this is about and why we're doing it.
Very good. Thank you, John, and good evening, everyone. As John said, I'm Richard Totorra with Capital Markets Advisors. We are an independent registered municipal advisor licensed by the Securities and Exchange Commission and the Municipal Security Rulemaking Board. Our role is to serve as the financial advisor to the City of Long Beach, and we also represent approximately 400 other public jurisdictions across New York State. In conjunction with our role as the financial advisor, we've been involved in discussions with Capital One, which is the city's primary depository bank, that has resulted in Capital One extending an offer to the city to purchase the 4.25 million deficiency note at an interest rate of 2.25 percent. It's a rate that we think is quite attractive under current market conditions, so we certainly commend Capital One for stepping up and giving us such an aggressive rate. In conjunction with what we do for the city, in addition to the standard practice of assisting the city with debt issuance, bonds, and notes to finance capital projects and cash flow needs, another part of the firm does strategic consulting work for local governments in New York State. My colleague Margaret Guarino is on the line. She heads up CMA's Strategic Consulting Group. Also on the line with us this evening is another colleague, Tom Bustakis. Tom is involved both on the debt issuance side as it pertains to the city and on the strategic consulting side of the firm's practice. And the strategic consulting side includes multi-year plans, strategic consulting, efficiency studies, things like that. Tom is going to take us through a brief PowerPoint presentation that gives a little more, puts a little more meat on the bone of the deficiency note that we're here to talk about this evening. Tom?
Thanks, Rich. So as Richard mentioned, the deficiency note is a short-term financing instrument designed to make the city hold for any unforeseen budgeted revenue loss or shortfall. So for the current fiscal year, through the end of June 30th this year, the city is expecting to have a revenue shortfall of approximately $4,250,000. This is comprised primarily of recreation and beach pass revenue loss that is not expected to come in, which accounts for approximately $1,460,000 of the shortfall. In addition to that, sales tax revenue is expected to decrease by about $800,000 over what was originally budgeted.
If I could interrupt Tom for a moment, there is a PowerPoint presentation. If someone could advance to the next slide, that would be helpful for the group that's listening on the line right now. Thank you.
Sales tax revenue shortfall of approximately $800,000, decrease in state aid per capita of $830,000, and various departmental income shortfalls, $250,000 for licenses and permits, $100,000 of parking violations, $120,000 for court fees, $300,000 for youth program, $100,000 for commuter parking, $130,000 for police fees, and finally, $160,000 in mortgage tax. So these are revenues that were previously budgeted for the current fiscal year that the city reasonably expects will not be received during the current fiscal year. Now, in the issuance of a deficiency note, typically this is issued during a fiscal year and must be paid off by the end of the following fiscal year. So in the, for the City of Long Beach, assuming that this note is approved and closes in the May of 2020, this would need to be repaid principal and interest no later than June 30th of 2021. Now, there is an instance where this could be extended further. If the 2021 budget is adopted prior to closing on the note, the city has the option to renew the note for an additional year, in which case they would have to be paid off no later than June 30th, 2022, giving it a little more flexibility for an additional year of financing. As Richard mentioned earlier, CMA has been negotiating the sale of the note with Capital One. They've agreed to purchase the $4,250,000 at an interest rate of 2.25 percent. Currently, the city has enough cash in hand to meet two more payrolls, meaning that the note would have to close by May 29th to avoid the city running into a cash deficit during the current fiscal year. Now, and to repay the deficiency note, the 4.25 million in principal, plus approximately $96,000 in interest, would have to be paid back in through the budget. This could be done in a few different ways, raising additional revenue for the upcoming fiscal year, reducing expenditures to attain additional savings, some combination of the two, or in a last case, the city could seek to obtain deficit financing, which would be a long-term deficit financing instrument, similar to a bond that would be, that would mature over 10 years. However, this would require first city council approval as well as state legislative approval. It would have to fund the city's entire deficit, which would be certified by the state, which could be a lengthy process. And the city would have to continue its process of having its budgets reviewed by the State Controller's office. So this would have to be a last effort to repay the note. Going back to the option to raise revenue in order to repay this note, if the entirety of it were to be absorbed by property tax increases to the city residents, the tax levy would have to be increased by about 11.1 percent, as opposed to what is currently in the proposed budget, which is a levy increase of 1.81 percent. The current increase falls within the tax cap, whereas the, absorbing the note repayment would have to pierce the cap. I'm now going to pass it on to Todd Miles of Paris Beach, who is the city's Bond Counsel, for some additional comment.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, John. I'm Todd Miles. I'm a partner with the law firm of Paris Beach. We have a statewide public finance and economic development practice with offices in Hempstead, New York, and all the major regions and urban centers throughout the state. Our role as the Bond Counsel to the city is to advise the city on all legal aspects of this borrowing transaction, make sure that the city is in compliance with all applicable state laws and federal laws relating to the borrowing that the city does, making sure that the city's borrowing is in the proper form for the situation that it's required for. We also prepare the authorizing resolutions for the city council, such as the resolution that's before the council tonight. We negotiate, working closely with CMA as the city's financial advisor, the terms of the borrowing, and then make sure that it's documented properly and administer the closing, execution of the transaction, so it's funded properly. In this case, this form of borrowing is unusual in that it is not a typical cash flow borrowing, which is fairly routine for the city and for municipalities and school districts throughout the state, where there is a need to borrow early in a fiscal year in anticipation of receipt of revenues that are expected to receive later in the fiscal year. We have a situation here with the city, which is shared with municipalities and school districts across the state and New York, and across the country for that matter. It is a direct result of the shutdown of the economy due to the COVID-19 epidemic. There have been a dramatic decrease in revenues that the city expects to receive below budget levels, and there is a specific form of borrowing which the city is permitted to do under state law, and that is the form of deficiency note. Again, it's not a cash flow borrowing, but it's in effect a short-term financing of a budget deficit resulting from this revenue shortfall. We recognize that there are limitations on how a municipality can finance revenue shortfall such as this, and we have been working together with Bond Counsel throughout the state to draft legislation, propose legislation, which would provide more flexibility for this type of financing, allow this type of financing to be renewed for several additional years in order to give the city or municipality during this more time to work out a recovery plan, instead of having to face the notes coming due in the following fiscal year or potentially in the second fiscal year if it's going to be adopted and closed after the adoption of the budget. Also, that legislation would provide blanket authorization for the city and all municipalities if it chose to issue long-term deficit bonds in order to pay off these short-term notes and then finance the deficit amount over a longer period, typically 10 years, possibly 15 years, if the amount to be financed was more than 2% of the city's budget. This legislation has been communicated to the State Controller and the Budget Division with staffs. These matters for the Governor's Office. It's been sent to various trade associations across the state, and we're hopeful when the legislature comes back that as part of the relief package for local governments, this legislation will be enacted. As Tom mentioned in his presentation, if this legislation is not enacted, in order for the city to be able to refinance this deficiency note on a long-term basis and be able to amortize the debt over a longer period such as 10 years, the city would have to seek specific state legislation authorizing the city to do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have about any of the legal aspects of this. Other than that, I would turn it back to you, John. Thank you.
All right, I had to unmute myself. All right, thank you for that. So do we have any questions from the council member? Okay, hearing none. I believe we did receive some questions by email. So I believe our friends at CMA have those, and they're going to be addressing those. So if you could go through the questions that were sent in, and please answer those.
Sure, John. This is Tom Bustakis again. So the first question's from Nora Egan. Why was this item taken off the agenda at the regular council meeting April 21st? As I believe John mentioned earlier, the city postponed the item until both Bond Counsel and us at CMA were available, which happened to be tonight. The next question's from Eileen Hesien. What is the deficiency note? How is it different from the other borrowings the city has done over the last six to 10 years? How will it be paid off, and when will it be paid off? I think we covered most of that during the presentations from ourselves and Bond Counsel. One reiterance for how it's different from other borrowing is that this is, as I think Todd mentioned, this is specifically for revenue shortfall, whereas previously the city had primarily borrowed for things like capital projects, typical cash flow borrowings to accommodate timing differences in receipt of revenue versus expenditures. Next from Warren Foreman. How is what you're proposing now different from what prior administrations have done? This is done to address two issues, a budget shortfall, which is adopted under previous administration and will be addressed by the upcoming 2021 fiscal budget. And this deficiency note specifically mitigates the shortfall of revenues, loss of revenues from beach, sales tax, meters, parking, et cetera, that we anticipate, that the city anticipates as a result of COVID. How will the deficit impact property taxes? As we mentioned before, the, there are a few different areas where the city could choose to tackle the undertaking of paying off this note, one of which could be absorption into the property taxes, and as we laid out, that would, that would cause an additional increase to city property taxes if that's the route that's undertaken. What is the expected revenue impact if the beach doesn't open in its normal capacity? Assuming this is a difficult forecast, can you share how you're approaching it and worst and best case scenarios? The city generally collects approximately $4.4 million in beach-related revenue, depending on the level of closures and the other measures of COVID. We are approaching this comprehensively, working with other local governments on the same beach to develop contingency plans that will allow the city to provide best services to its residents and visitors while being cognizant of financial implications of whatever changes will be made to the plan. From Robert Sininsky, why not reduce certain services such as the continuing skating rink while the emergency exists? The steps have been done to this effect, primarily the layoff of some nonessential employees, of which there are no more currently employed with the city. The ice skating rink and some other parks and rec centers have already been closed to accommodate this. Why doesn't this council take necessary steps to petition the state legislature and the governor to pass legislation to create a state financial control board? You know, that's a, I think I would defer to Richard to speak on a state control board and the impact that that could have on the city.
Sure. Only, only a handful of public jurisdictions across New York State have been or are presently subject to state control boards. The one that comes to mind is certainly in the past, the City of Buffalo, the City of Yonkers. They are quite onerous. They, you know, insinuate themselves in all corners of government. They micromanage. I think the, I would think that the City of Long Beach would be concerned about giving up the level of control that they would have to give up if indeed a state control board came on board. Then once the control board is in place, it itself is an expense, and they don't go away overnight. If indeed a control board is put into place, I would venture to guess it would be in place for many years. Nassau County, of course, has NIFA, the Nassau Interim Finance Authority, that has been overseeing the county's financing. I suspect that's been at least the last 10 years. Todd Miles, do you want to chime in on this?
Richard, ironically, you mentioned NIFA, which is a control board for Nassau County, and probably unknown to a lot of people, but in the state budget that was adopted this year, there was legislation included which extended the life of NIFA and its ability to borrow on behalf of the county. So I believe it was scheduled to expire sometime around 2030 or 2035, but now it can extend its debt on behalf of the county out to, I believe, 2051. So echoing what you said, once these control boards are put in place, they're very hard to get rid of. They do, in effect, substitute appointed officials and people appointed by powers outside, in this case, the city, whether it be a control board in the city, who make governing decisions. So there's, you lose that connection, as you said, Richard, between the people and their elected representatives. You now have governing decisions made by folks who are appointed by the governor and other elected officials. So that is something that you would want to think long and hard before doing, and another thing that should point out is that they're expensive. Those folks get paid high state salaries, and it's all, it would all be on the city's tab. So it's like creating a shadow government that is not responsible to the people in the city, but is being paid for by the people in the city.
Thanks, Todd. Back to the questions from Rob and Donovan. Is not best practice to borrow for recurring financial operational costs? Why are we doing it? There was a deficit before COVID-19. How did the pandemic add another $4,250,000 to that deficit? To answer the first part, this is not expected to be a recurring cost. Obviously, we're still in the infant stages of this coronavirus situation, and the full effects won't be known for some time. But this is primarily to address the current revenue shortfall, and the expectation is that the, once this is over, the beaches would be able to open and things could start to get back to normal. What specific deficiency in the general fund is the borrowing covering? I think we covered that earlier in the slide. How much interest will the taxpayers be paying a year on these deficits, on these deficiency notes? So as I mentioned, the interest rate is 2.25 percent, which equates to about $96,000 in interest for a full year. How many years will the taxpayers be paying for the notes? Again, this is a short-term borrowing that is currently expected to be repaid next year, but as we mentioned, there are certain options which could extend that for an additional year. What happens next year and the year after when the deficit keeps growing? The city's administration is working on a contingency plan to address the potential impact from COVID-19 and any additional impact that might have on the city's fiscal '21 operations. John, those are all the questions that we received. I'd like to turn it back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So just so people understand, the city gets its property tax revenue. So the taxes we as homeowners pay typically comes into the city in July and December, twice a year. When we get to the latter part of the year, like we're getting now, what often carries the city through is the late-year revenue from things like beach pass sales, sales for the parking passes for the Long Island Railroad Station, things like that, the late-season revenues. The issue here is because of COVID. We don't know if those revenues are going to come in. So that is what we're, we're basically hedging here, assuming that money's not coming in, and this is to carry the city through the end of the year. Now, there is a, what they call a call on this, so if the monies do come in, we can pay this off sooner. But this is what's going to carry the city to the end of the year because, quite frankly, we have to keep, we have to keep the lights on and pay the employees. And how this is going to impact this next year, this is going to put the onerous on the administration to continue streamlining the city's operations and bringing revenues and expenses in line with each other, which has not happened in the city in some time. And that's why CMA is involved. The city is, there's a five-year financial plan being put together, which the city has not had before. So it's, it's a process, and it's not going to be flipping a switch, fixing the problems. The problems are built up over time. It's going to take time to fix them, but we're taking the steps to move us in the right direction. So with that, I guess I will turn it back over to Ms. Frazier.
On to the voting portion. Item 1 is a resolution delegating to the City Controller of the City of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, the powers to authorize the issuance of $4,250,000 deficiency notes of the city or as much thereof as may be necessary for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, and to prescribe the terms, form, and contents, and provide for the sale and credit enhancement of such notes. I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Councilmember Delory.
Just want to say that a lot of the revenue that the city was expecting, like Senator Bendo said, came in the form of beach passes and related items, which normally came in May and June. So this is not any unique situation in New York State. Unfortunately, I don't think Long Beach is alone when its beach community is impacted by this. So I vote yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin?
Yes.
That's President McGinnis.
Good evening. I have reviewed the cash flow forecast prepared by Ms. Resnick and Ms. Gaden. Their recommendations are sound, transparent, and based on fact. This revenue shortfall borrowing is necessary. Due to previous administrations, we don't have enough in our cash reserve account, AKA rainy day fund, to weather any sort of crisis such as this. Previous administrations actually left this council with a negative balance in the general fund. Ms. Gaden has been working nonstop with our state and county elected officials to help us obtain COVID-19-related funding to repay this deficiency note as soon as possible, but there are no guarantees. Therefore, I will be, and I ask that each of you, reach out to our Congresswoman, Cap- Therefore, I will be, and I ask that each of you, reach out to our Congresswoman Kathleen Rice to ask her to champion COVID-19-related assistance for Long Beach. You can reach Congresswoman Rice at 516-739-3008. Let's make sure Long Beach gets its fair share. With that, I vote yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, councilmember DeLory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, folks. There will be another council meeting, the normal one, on Tuesday, where we're going to get into more details about the budget and the city's financial situation, so I'm in for that to start adding to the picture of where we are and where we're going.
Before you turn off, I'm sorry to interrupt. Dave, could you just provide the email for residents to ask questions regarding the budget?
Info@longbeachny.gov.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, and with that, we hope you tune in on Tuesday, and we'll see you then. Have a good night.
Night.